How it all comes together, but ultimately, everything we're trying to do as a delegation is truly unified bipartisan. At the end of the day, we're all in this together. So Brian, I thank you for putting this together. And at the same time, I'm eager to hear the feedback of my other colleagues as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tony. And what I'll do from here is I'm going to jump into, and Tony was talking, he had a talking most about data and testing. I'm going to give a brief summary of the federal response and what happened yesterday down in DC. Laura Devlin is going to talk about unemployment and unemployment claims. And then Kristin McCarthy, he's going to talk about mental health. And then Carla Meeklos from Operation Hope is unfortunately not be able to attend today, but I'm going to give a quick update on her behalf. So what is our federal government doing? So mainly the thing that we focus on is called the CARES Act. It's the coronavirus aid relief and economic security. It's a $2 trillion stimulus bill that was passed by Congress a few weeks ago. The third round of it was just passed by the House yesterday. And what does it include? So direct payments. So this is an amount of, you know, $1,200, $2,400 for married couples. There's a $500 child group credit included too. This gets phased down based on income levels. There's also this pandemic unemployment assistance. This provides payments to workers that are not traditionally eligible for unemployment benefits, self-employed independent contractors. Also, this also includes a delay of payment of employer payroll taxes due to, due for employers and self-employed. This is, think of this as kind of like, you know, when you have to pay social security taxes for your employers, those are being delayed. And lastly, and probably most importantly, I'm going to talk about the Paycheck Protection Program. This is the $349 billion loan program that was designed to help small businesses stay open, provide a direct incentive for them to keep their workers on the payroll. And the SBA will actually forgive a portion of these loans if all the employers are kept on the payroll for eight weeks and the money is used for things like payroll, rent, mortgage interest, or utilities. This program has been somewhat controversial as certain banks did not have process in place to process applications quickly when the program opened up. And some mom and pop small businesses seem to be at a disadvantage compared to larger small businesses who had stronger pre-existing relationships with their banks. So what happened last night is basically Congress and the White House, they reached a deal to put additional money into this program and into coronavirus relief efforts. So what's next? So that was where we are right now is there's $322 billion in additional funding for the small business loan program. This money though, I think the concern is, you know, this money will likely be already used up or items that are in the queue. I would say if you haven't applied, I still would. I think it's important to get yourself in that queue as soon as possible. And there's the program, actually, the most recent one that was passed last night also had some revisions to hopefully address some of those concerns about the mom and pop, you know, small businesses being at a disadvantage where there being a set aside for small business lenders, which I think is a great thing. There's also $60 billion more for small business disaster loans and grants, $75 billion for hospitals. Now remember hospitals are hurting right now, you know, elective surgeries. That's really a lot of where the profit margin will come from your hospitals. When you think elective surgeries, I mean, that could be things like hip replacements. These are not what I would say purely elective surgeries. And, you know, this is money that's hopefully going to aid our hospitals. And then there's also 25 billion for coronavirus testing, which is, you know, a very great thing. And I'm glad that was included. So this additional cash infusions already add to what, you know, a historic rescue package to cushion the blow. And, you know, this is a lot of debt that our country is going to be having to take on. But the reality is our country is in unforeseen kind of circumstances. And these things are necessary to, you know, hopefully get our country and people through this. So that's the update. We'll also during the question and answer, we'll answer some specific questions on the PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program. Cause I know there's some people that have questions on that. We'll get to those in a little bit. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Laura Devlin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us. So I am Laura Devlin. I represent both Fairfield and Trumbull in the 134th District. I really appreciate everybody taking time. I know this is an incredibly trying time for everybody. And my heart goes out to those who have suffered and are suffering and have lost family members, friends, loved ones from this virus. And I know that many, my household included, have been impacted from an employment, from an income perspective. And it is, it is challenging. The phone calls that I receive from constituents are what keep me up at night. At the same token, our community has really come together. And I think that is just one of the incredible things about, you know, where we live and all of the people around us to try to make a difference. One of the challenging areas has absolutely been unemployment. I know that there are individuals that for weeks, months have yet to have claims processed. And it has been an overwhelm at the Department of Labor. I do have to give them credit. They are doing an amazing job so far while there is still a backlog. And if you're waiting, I know that probably isn't what you want to necessarily hear. They've processed nearly 400,000 claims, which is about two years worth of claims in one month. About 80% of those are processed now. So what they have done from when this first started and they received this onslaught is they have increased staffing four times. So there are 80 people processing claims. They also have an automated system that has sped things up by weeks. They are hiring 60 more people. They also have 25 people on two dedicated phone lines. And I know if you've tried, it is still very difficult to get through. But they are starting to make some headway. They're working overtime and weekends, so really trying to get ahead of this. If you have specific questions, one thing I would also suggest is on the CT DOL website, which is ctdl.state.ct.us. They have put together and they updated every single night, a very detailed Q and A. And if there is anything new, it is color coded. So you can see information that has changed. I know from my colleagues, and I believe it is the same for every caucus. We meet regularly and we also share specific constituent issues to the DOL. So, and those are also being addressed. So I just want to kind of give you that scenario of overall what the DOL is doing and where you can go for some information as well, or questions about claim status. Two other things I just want to touch on is Brian had mentioned, I believe, the extra $600 payment that would be forthcoming as part of the CARES program. The state is hoping, it originally announced that it would start today. They are saying they hope to start processing claims on Monday. And you do not need to do anything if you are currently collecting unemployment. There is no other action that you need to take. That stimulus payment or that extra $600 will start processing and it will also be retroactive. So that program runs from like March 29th to July 25th. If you are a self-employed individual, the federal program that was announced not long ago kind of took probably all of the states by surprise. It isn't just Connecticut, but there wasn't a state in the nation that had a system in place to be able to process that program. So the great news is the program is there. It was announced before it could be processed. And there's a lot of angst, of course, because people have lost income about it getting going. On April 30th, what the Department of Labor is saying is that they will be ready to implement that program. But there are some important things to note. You do, don't ask me why, I don't think it makes a lot of sense, but you do. You need to file, if you are self-employed and want to take advantage of this program, you need to file first for regular unemployment benefits and be denied. So what that means is go to the Department of Labor website, file for unemployment. Your claim would be denied. And then come April 30th, apply for that unemployment independent contractor. And how to do that will be forthcoming once the system is up. The dates on that program are February 2nd to December 26th of 2020. It's up to 39 weeks of benefit. And those payments should be retroactive as well. So I hope that helps provide some overview, some broad context of what is happening. If you, we did get some questions, I think we're going to address at the end. But if you have a specific situation and you have not received any information, what the DOL has found for regular claims is that generally there have been errors in submissions. Whether it's your name doesn't match your name on the social security card, whether a zip code is put in incorrectly. So just double check all of that information. If you have nothing back from DOL and you submitted, let if one of us know, and we can specifically follow up on your specific claim. I know this is just challenging and difficult with lost income for an extended period of time. So we are here to help you. And I hope that this overview has given you some insight as to what you can expect.
Thanks, Laura. And with that, we're going to pass it over to Kristin, who's going to talk about mental health. And obviously with the social isolation and everything going on, it's a very important issue at the time, at this time.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks so much for putting this together and thanks to my colleagues. I'd like to echo what Laura said. My heart goes out to so many people, not only those who have lost loved ones, but also everyone struggling with job loss and stress, all kinds of stresses. And today I'm going to wear my state rep hat as the state rep for the eastern part of Fairfield in the 133rd District, but also my social work hat and as Chair of Fairfield CARES, which is our local prevention council for youth substance use and wellness promotion. The biggest message that I want to get across today is something that Laura said too, which is reach out for help. Please, please know that all of us are here and there are many resources that are available for you going through these really difficult times. And I'm going to share a few of those today. One of them is, as I mentioned, Fairfield CARES, which is particularly geared towards parents and children. And Ryani Noor does an amazing job with programming and also information on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. And soon we're going to be sending out a survey actually for parents and young people to tell us what they've, how they've been coping and what they've been dealing with during this difficult time so that we know as we're coming out of this, how we can help address those issues for our young people and families. For everyone, there's an organization called the Hub CT, as in the hub of a wheel. And the hub has a lot of resources available on there for everyone of all ages. Whether you're dealing with mental health issues, if you're in recovery and suicide prevention, which I'm going to talk about in a second. There's youth peer support information, family support groups. NAMI has information on there. There are even Zoom links for yoga and mindfulness and meditation. And all of those again can be found at the Hub CT. A lot of really tremendous resources available for people. During this time when we're all stuck at home together and we know that domestic violence does not take a vacation. And I want to make sure that people are aware that for anyone who needs to get a restraining order, there is still a way to do that, even though the courts are not meeting as much. There's an online option, ConnecticutCTSafeConnect.org, where you can dial 888-774-2900. And you can also reach out to our local resource, the Center for Family Justice. They have hotlines available for people to talk to. But we know, and we've seen this around the world, that domestic violence calls have gone up. And we know that this is something that's really important for people to know that there are resources available. So again, that is CT Safe Connect, where people can get help with a restraining order if needed. Some of the direct support that's available to people, because we've had some folks reach out to us, I know we all have, in terms of maybe some crisis support and just the difficulty of facing these issues. There's actually a national hotline called the Disaster Distress Hotline. It's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week hotline available for crisis support and some counseling. That number is 800-985-5011. If you didn't catch that number, it's also available on the Hub CT. The other number that's a lot easier for all of us to remember is 211. 211 is actually a line that you can get connected with all kinds of resources in our state and really has been central in the COVID situation for us. DCF here in our state has also put up a line called Talk It Out for parents to be able to call. It is an anonymous line and I cannot emphasize that enough. This is an anonymous resource available to folks here in our state and it's Talk It Out. And I know I'm giving you a lot of phone numbers, but that one is 833-258-5011. Information about that and so many other things can be found at ct.gov. There are a lot of resources available on that page. If you scroll down to the bottom at slash coronavirus, if you scroll down to the bottom, there are also resources available there. And there's another peer support line. Again, you can find information about this on the hub, which is what's called a warm line. Meaning if you're looking for, if a young adult in particular is looking for a peer to talk to. I just want to remind people to pay attention to how you're doing. If you're having trouble sleeping, if your appetite has changed, if your glass of wine has turned into three or four. And again, wearing my Fairfield CARES hat, just reminding folks to be cognizant of what we're modeling to our young people. But in particular, if you or someone you know is having thoughts of suicide during this really difficult time, here in Connecticut, you can call 211 for connection to support. You can also reach out to the National Suicide Hotline, which is 800-273-TALK. Again, the Hub CT has this information available. In an emergency, please call 911. And that is true for someone who is immediately at risk of harming her himself. And I'll end with a couple of things that you can do to help deal with your own stress. One is don't watch the news 24/7. It's pretty tough right now. And so it's really important to take some breaks from the news and, and check out some things like those beautiful flowers that Tony has behind him. Behind me, you know, I have Mount St. Helens as a reminder. And it's, you can see it's after the top of the volcano blew off. And there's still so much beauty in the midst of that. Call or text people you love. Try some new relaxation techniques and add some extra time in your day for daily stress relief. There's a lot more stress in our lives right now. So you might need a little extra time for stress release. And again, remember what I started with, which is please reach out for help and support. And we're here to help you. And there are so many other great resources that I shared, plus here in the town through our own human and social services. And with that, I'll turn it back to you. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you so much, Kristin. And Carla from Operation Hope cannot be here. Something came up urgently and unexpectedly. So, but I did want to pass on a message from her, which basically how much she appreciates the level of support that, you know, that's been getting offered up by the community in these challenging times. So a little background on Operation Hope. So they operate a food drive pantry service, offering prepackaged groceries. Their normal pantry hours still are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 10 to 12, and then Thursdays, 4 to 6. Any resident of Fairfield can use the pantry. You must have an ID and then you have to follow it up with some proof of residency. The bags are actually pretty generous in their portion for, by family size. So, you know, they definitely use the extra time to, and they appreciate all the volunteers helping, including the Fairfield Cert team members to get those packages put together. They still serve lunch and dinner Monday through Friday. They follow social distancing and other safety precautions. And as to Kristin's point too, with all the need for kind of mental health and support, they're still operating their outreach intake, houseling and counseling programs. The staff working alternating day schedules whenever possible. And they also, you know, their resources are being stretched thin. You know, there has been overwhelmingly support, but every day that this pandemic continues, there's going to, there's greater need. So please continue to give and we anticipate these numbers to continue. So Operation Hope has been seen in this community for 35 years. And, you know, they're not going to, they're continuing to do an amazing job. So Carla, sad that she can't be here, but wanted to pass on that message. And anyone who could come this Sunday, for example, between 10 and 12 to Black Rock Yoc Club, we're going to be doing our next food drive there and then probably back to our normal location and the first congregational church right off of Beach Road. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions. I'm going to start with the ones that we received online first. We may not be able to get to all the ones in the chat section, but if that's the case, we will make sure to get back to you and follow up. So the first question we had, which is kind of a big one. So I don't know how much time we could probably spend on it, but I'll open it up to all four members, which is the longer we are shut down means less revenue for government and thus a reduction in services. What are your plans and how do you think the state will respond? So I'm going to jump in first on this one and then I'm going to pass it over to my colleagues. But Governor Lamont said May 20th would not be the day when this entire state reopens. That was somewhat of a hope at an earlier time. So the co-chairs of the state's reopen Connecticut Advisory Group are now saying June is likely this time. Connecticut will begin loosening restrictions on businesses and gatherings. And, you know, as the state responds, I think it's going to be a balancing act. You know, at the end of the day, health and safety is going to have to be the key concern. We're going to need to make sure we've got beds, hospital beds, ventilators and better testing in place. But I don't think we can downplay the negative impacts of what this isolation and closing down and the impact on the economy, job loss, poverty, mental health, children's safety with being out of school, increases in domestic violence, violence. So all those need to be part of this decision framework, in my opinion. So with that, I'll shut up and pass it on to my colleagues for their take.
If I may, I think it's critical to understand that it is a delicate balancing act. I think our first priority is the public health prognosis, that there are guidelines set up with regards to 14 straight days of downward trends. We've seen some of the trends that's necessary, but we are very far from a conclusive action plan. The task force that's in place is a good start because unfortunately, we're not going to be able to get back into a full comprehensive business operation, unfortunately. But, but the devastation is evident by the immediate shutdown that we encountered. That being said, I don't think we can give back to any sense of a new normal unless we establish testing protocols that are extensive and comprehensive. We need to establish a new social distancing protocol and how we can manage business operations. We need to ensure that there's adequate supply of PPE protection. All of that has to come in play and we do need to plan to get back to a new normal. But I truly believe that we have to base it on medical facts. And we need to be cautious because the idea of rushing too quick into any course of a recovery could create a second wave. And it's important to look at these data points. We are along the 9195 corridor, really the hotspot, particularly in southwestern Connecticut. But there are other counties in the state that do not have a very high number. So there may be that false sense of security. It is imperative that we never, ever let down our guard. It's critical because the contagious nature of this COVID-19 virus can go anywhere. And unless we fully contain it, the idea of any degree of normalcy is critical. But nevertheless, I think we have to prepare and we have to be diligent to really revitalize and resurrect the economic or assets that's been caused by this illness. I think we're a long way to go. And for those that want to reopen quickly, I would urge caution because ultimately this is a life and death decision. And the stories that are tragic are far too many right now.
How about you, Kristin and Laura?
Go ahead, Laura. So, you know, I really largely agree with what my colleagues have just outlined. There's no easy answer here and I do think it needs to be science-based. At the same token, and there's a tremendous amount of frustration because what we're experiencing in Fairfield and in Fairfield County is very different than what's being experienced in other parts of the state. And their frustration is even greater. Why are we being penalized, if you will, where we aren't being impacted? But that's today. Who, you know, the virus doesn't recognize county barriers. So it's really quite complicated. One of my other colleagues had mentioned, you know, with the new CT Open Committee, which is great, but who on the committee is still waiting for unemployment benefits that haven't received any sort of income in months? Who has a child with special needs where they are trying to homeschool them? Who on that committee is a business owner who hasn't been able to get Paycheck Protection Program filed yet? There are real challenges that people are facing and, you know, we've talked about them here, both from an economic standpoint, Kristin, from a mental health perspective. All that needs to be weighed, but at the same token as Tony said, right? This is life and death. So it's complicated. I wish I had the magic solution of how we could move forward. I think we need to consider all aspects of this and not, you know, just one in itself. So that's my view at this particular point.
I think you're hearing, you know, broad agreement across the four of us. I think in terms of moving forward, this is going to be a marathon for us and not a sprint. And that may be hard to hear, but I think it's important for us. You know, I'm someone who's, I used to be a little bit more of a runner than I am now, but we've got to pace ourselves and understand, be realistic and do everything we possibly can. And to Tony's point, this virus started with a handful of people. That's how it started. And until we have a vaccine or a treatment that is really quick and viable for us, we're going to be facing some type or some version of these measures in the foreseeable future. So what does that mean for us? You asked about revenue, Brian. I think that we will see significant impact on revenue at both the state and the local level. And we're going to need help from the federal government. You know, you've heard governors from all parties, both parties, but all backgrounds saying the same. We're going to need the federal government. We had hoped that that would come in this package. But right now, the money that has come to the states from the federal government and to towns of over certain size has been for expenses for the coronavirus, not for any loss in revenue. We need to continue to advocate for that at the federal level and assure that they will help us because I do expect that we're going to see some pretty significant impacts here. I agree completely with Tony. Testing, tracing and quarantine or isolation, those, until we have those in place in a much more significant way, and I applaud the governor and his chief of staff for the outreach that they've done to the business community, the partnership with CVS that Tony mentioned, also with Quest Diagnostics will help that. And it will help us hopefully get there as soon as possible. But it is going to be a long road and we're going to need to work at all levels of government in partnership. There are some things that we can do really well. And I think we are working together at the state and local level here, but we're going to need our federal partners for that as well.
I mean, the pandemic is so huge, and this is being recorded, that I'm going to snip the part that you said, I agree 100% with Tony. That's, that's how, that's how this is. But, um, all right, the next question is, it's probably a tracing, it's a tracer question that probably maybe we should go to Tony, which is, I'm interested in becoming a tracer and would like to get on the list and start volunteering. I don't know if that's available yet, but the question is how do I sign up? Is that, Tony, do you know if there's?
You know, it's interesting. It's such a fluid situation. We are expanding tests for the COVID-19, as we mentioned with the hospitals and, and with the CVS. And I don't know the details of the Quest testing, but those are to test for individuals that may be impacted or affected with the COVID-19. The antibody and the tracing, which is another critical component of testing, is, is much more extensive and it has not received FDA approval. And, and I think we mentioned earlier Hartford Hospital, Bridgeport Hospital may have established antibody protocols, but right now, as I understand it, they're limited to healthcare professionals and individuals that have been hospitalized. Why spread antibody testing is essential for us to kind of take the incremental path toward a new normal? That being said, the question that was asked, how they could be part of an antibody test in order to get back into a new normalcy that they can have some degree of comfort that can't get reaffected or they can see loved ones? Unfortunately, I would offer to say you will have to live in the days of Zoom and FaceTime because the safest way that we can offer right now is unless we have much more extensive testing and readily available, regulated and approved testing, I would urge caution. I would urge taking that measure of staying away. caution. I would urge taking that measure of staying away from loved ones. Um because at the end of the day, what we don't know is most dangerous. What we do know is staying within the confines of safety and stay at home and stay safe. Uh but testing is essential, and it's remarkable because these are lessons that we need to learn. Government can't be the complete solution out of this dilemma. Um I know there's a drive to have the federal government uh be a solution to this, and the federal government has one advantage that state and local government does not have. Federal government can print money. The amount of stimulus funds and the money that's available to solve all of our challenges, the bill will come due later after all of this. So we have to be judicious. I think the way out of this is truly a public-private dynamic, and I'll applaud the governor for undertaking that. The relationship with CVS, the relationship with the various entities that help us out of this, not solely depending on government. I think that's the way to go. And I would encourage that whatever we do, we look at being able to move us forward and to have that kind of momentum moving forward, not depend on government to be the solution. They're going to be a partner. They're essential. But I I just truly believe that the frustrations that I've heard up and down the street, that you'll hear more on the questions down the road, is, you know, all the money that we've been given, they haven't been able to get to the people down on Main Street that's needs it. So public-private dynamics are the engine that needs to move us forward.
Brian, can I jump in on that one, too? So the I've had people reach out to me to ask about whether or not they can be contact tracers as well. And what we've heard from Governor Lamont is there are two pieces. One is um the technological options in terms of contact tracing, which, you know, Tony mentioned earlier, an app that people are being asked to sign up for. That is not personal data. You're being asked to put your zip code in, your gender, your age, but no personally identifying data. There are states that are currently looking at solutions for contact tracing that would allow, and you've read this in other countries, specific data to be used for the contact tracing. But no app alone is going to be able to substitute for the human need. And right now, we're in a phase of the virus where there's not been as much uh heavily invested into contact tracing because of the volume of cases. As we go farther down on the other side of the curve, we're going to need more people to be able to do that and make those connections. What I've heard um over the course of the past week from Josh Gavall, who's helping to lead the Emergency Operations Command up in Hartford, is that they are talking jointly with New York about, and, you know, New York, New Jersey, Connecticut's been working together, but particularly focused on how this will work in Connecticut. And we know that our local public health departments are, they lead the effort. And it's not going to be sans Cleary here in Fairfield having to figure out contact tracing on his own. This is going to be a coordinated effort, but we're still waiting to hear the details on that. So to anyone who's reached out about that, we're going to have to wait and see what they announce over the coming days, and that's going to be part of that reopen Connecticut Committee. And the one other piece of information that I'll share is uh there's there's a writer who's had a piece viewed, The Hammer and the Dance, you may have seen, Tom Tomas Pueyo. I'm not sure if I'm saying his last name correctly, P U E Y O. He's got another piece coming out. I was on a call with legislators from around the country with him and got to see the preview slide deck. And it's a really data-heavy piece that he will be putting out, and as was The Hammer and the Dance. But it it'll give you a good sense of, you know, some of the things we're going to need to do when it comes to things like contact tracing.
One other thing I'd throw out to the individual interested in being a tracer, and I don't know if that is looking for employment or looking for a volunteer opportunity, but the state does have a really great resource, which is portal dot C T dot gov backslash coronavirus. So that will give you all of the updated information. But if you scroll down, you'll see a box that says volunteers needed to participate. And if you click on that, it will take you to a page where you can either select if you're a medical professional or a non-medical professional and sort of get into a database of volunteers that um whether or not they do it by your zip code so that you can volunteer more locally. But there are ways for our citizens to get involved to help. So just wanted to point that out to you.
Excellent. And that's actually, that's two birds with one stone, because that was a that was a question we were going to get later on. So that's great. Um, the next question that we got in was, "How can we find out the status of our stimulus checks?" The IRS website just gives the message, "Payment status unavailable." So for those who aren't aware, if you go to the IRS website and it's, if you just put in IRS, "Get my payment," it will give you some background and you put in your social security number, date of birth, uh to get the status of your stimulus check. A lot of people are getting this payment status unavailable popping up. It's a little frustrating. Um so there's a couple of reasons why it would pop up. You're required to file a tax return. You are required to file a tax return, but we haven't finished processing processing your return for two thousand nineteen. That's one reason that I got back from the IRS for why that would pop up. Um, other ones are the application doesn't yet have your data, and we're working on adding more data to allow more people to use it. Um, other reasoning why that you would get that pop up when you put your information is, is you usually don't file a return and you use the non-file and you use nonfilers, "Enter payment info here," but we haven't processed your entry yet. Um, another one is you may not be eligible for a payment. Um, so I would say, take a deep breath. Um, these IRS update, "Get my payments" are done once a day, so it's done overnight, so I would, you could check every day. Um, and if you are eligible for a payment and have provided your information, either through a recent tax return or the nonfilers, then the "Enter payment information," it it will come up uh over time. And I think the federal government, like the DOL, is a little inundated right now. Um, other questions that we have here, um, "If you get social security, would you get a stimulus check automatically, or would you have to file your tax return for two thousand nineteen first?" Um, and the response that I got here from the IRS website was, "People who filed a tax return for two thousand nineteen or two thousand eighteen, no additional action is needed. Um, no additional action is needed by taxpayers who have already filed their tax returns uh this year for two thousand nineteen. The IRS will use this information to calculate the payment amount. If you haven't filed yet for two thousand nineteen, but filed a two thousand eighteen federal tax return, for these taxpayers, the IRS will use that information from the two thousand eighteen tax filing to make the economic impact impact payment calculation." Anything else on Missing Group?
The only thing I would add is, social security filers will receive their benefits the same way that their 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 payment in the same way they receive their social security benefits.
Yes. Um, another question we got was, uh, "In seeing how quickly the PPP funds were exhausted, thinking it may be the same in the la latest round of the CARES Act, many of the Greater Fairfield Board of Realtor members are independent contractors who are not eligible for the Connecticut DOL unemployment insurance, only the pandemic unemployment assistance, which is not accepting applications until April thirtieth." The question is, "Does the pandemic unemployment assistance funds come from the same CARES program? Um, what is the likelihood of the funds being exhausted before the April thirtieth application date? If exhausted, what are you doing to help independent contractors?" So I would say from a um, from a paycheck protection program perspective, anyone who's in the queue, I think you've got a decent shot with this latest round to get in. Um, I don't know. Uh, I I think for anyone who's now trying to get access to the PPP dollars, I think those are likely already been spoken for, but I would still put yourself in the queue. There's no harm to doing that. Uh, when it comes to the pandemic unemployment assistance, I have not heard of those similar type of financial restraints with that program, but um I'll open it up to the group to see if they've heard anything else or or something differently.
No, I haven't either in terms of from an independent contractor perspective, but just make sure you file for regular unemployment benefits first and get denied. And then submit come April thirtieth, once the information's out about how to apply, do it, take advantage of it.
And I, go ahead, go ahead, Kristen.
Thanks, Tony. The two resources that I continue to refer people to um in terms of how to access potential funding, the State Department of Economic and Community Development has partnered with the Women's Business Development Council for some some funding for uh women and minority-owned businesses in particular. And in addition, the Small Business Development Center offers some free resources and outreach. Those are places where small business owners can go for advice and ideas and uh to get, you know, more input on what funding streams are currently available and might become available in the future and technical assistance as well.
The uh, the pandemic fund, the PUA, with all these acronyms, is being administered by the Connecticut Department of Labor. Uh, the delay in in the program till April thirtieth is based on the fact that no such program prior existed because the idea of self-employ uh being able to benefit into the unemployment insurance program, which prior they did not contribute into, was was not in existence prior to this pandemic crisis. Now, the federal government through the CARES Act supposedly provides funding to that, but they're wait and see in regards to replenishment. So the Department of Labor is administering it, and the the message is, "Your your applications aren't being taken till April thirtieth." I think there are two questions about that. One, it's a brand-new system, so I think there's vigilance and there's greater accountability that needs to be undertaken because they've never experienced that in the Department of Labor. And anything new uh combined with the immense uh burden and and workload that they have is going to indeed be a big problem. I think the second question that's being asked, with the money running out in PPP so quickly, and there's such a a a tremendous demand, people are concerned if that money is going to run out. I can share with you from a senior Department of Labor contact that I had a conversation with, they are trying to provide some level of reassurance that even though the state's unemployment insurance funds is at a low level, uh, the state is making a commitment that should the money run out of the unemployment uh insurance fund in the state of Connecticut, the state is making a commitment to make that loan request to the federal government to replenish that. So the idea is there will be resources, money particularly, to those that are making the application in need. That may not be any consolation for those people that are at dire straits, that aren't getting any answers and and really forced to wait till April thirtieth before they get any answers. But my suggestion is, speak with your uh legal and accounting professionals, be vigilant and and incorporate all of us to be a part of the squeaky wheel for you. Uh, but you need to get your application in. And I believe even though the April thirtieth is a date that they give, you should check it every day that perhaps before the April thirtieth, they start taking in the application. I would urge you to get your application in as soon as possible, uh, because it's a system that has not been tested. It's going to have some significant kinks to it. Um, and if it runs into trouble, uh, let us be an advocate for you. It it has been a difficult time. And and I know for all of us, a big part of our day has been fielding phone calls and trying to be a voice and a conduit for all of you. And for all the people that are listening in and listening to all of us talking, we hear you, and and we're eager to get your thoughts and be able to articulate your thoughts and frustrations uh to the Department of Labor, to DECD, and to the various banks that may not be as responsive. For me, the 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 talking points needs to be for our state agencies, whether it's the SBA, whether it's with the various state agencies, or our local and national banks that are administering these programs. You need to be responsive, you need to be transparent, and you need to be accountable to the people that are needing your help.
Just to jump on one thing and reiterate what Tony just mentioned, um, the way that the Department of Labor is sort of operating is they are updating their website, they are posting information, but they're really relying on the individuals, whether you are trying to pursue regular unemployment or any of the federal programs being administered through the DOL. They will post updates, and they're relying on you to go to their website to see what has been published as announced. And like I mentioned earlier, their FAQ document is really pretty useful. So just because he went there yesterday, don't hesitate going there today, tomorrow. Uh, that's where they're keeping uh their updates posted.
All right, excellent. So we're going to go to the uh for the five minutes we have left. We're going to try to go to the Zoom group chat questions. Um, and see if we can get some of those uh answered. So, so one question we have here is, "The published mortality rate in Connecticut seems to be significantly higher than national or international averages. Why does Connecticut DPH feel that is?" Um, I I think one of the problems we're having in Connecticut obviously is in um uh with seniors and in senior homes and in in those kind of settings where I think that's part of the reason why uh the number is so much higher. I also think part of the problem is the lack of testing. I do think that the pandemic is more prevalent in Connecticut, in probably our country, than we even know. Uh, and part of the reason we don't have, you know, the best numbers is because I don't think we have a solid denominator to know actually how many people have been impacted by it. So uh, I don't know. Others want to chime in?
I would love to chime in. I, again, I'm going to reference the uh author who I talked about before, Tomas Pueyo. And one of the slides that he shared the other day was the percentage of positives. So as an indicator, to your point, Brian, the positive percentages in testing in the United States is about twenty percent. In some of the countries where they've really gotten this under control, the positives are closer to two, three, four, five percent. So back to the point about we need to do the testing, but why is it more so here? You're absolutely right. We are part of that Greater New York hotspot. And why is that? If you look at the map of Connecticut about where the highest number of cases are, it really tracks along the population density and our our transportation corridor, our ninety-five Metro North train line, and then going up Connecticut, up ninety-one, um where the train line is up there. So that's where our population is, but it's also where the movement is. We saw early on in this pandemic that there was uh an outbreak in New Rochelle, which is right near us. We know that Westport, early on in this, there were, there are super spreaders is one of the things that that they talk about. Um, this is why, to the point of when folks in other parts of the state say, "Well, we only have a few cases." If we can't contain, test and identify, trace and uh isolate or quarantine, we're going to continue to see that spread. And that's what we saw before. This virus is a hidden virus. It hides really well. It's harder to know. It was not until a little bit later on, you know, we're, we live in a really um cosmopolitan area. People are coming into the New York region from all over the world, although now I would just say a lot of the research is showing that it's really domestic transmission. So it's not necessarily, at this point, people coming in from other countries. It's more about the transmission in our state. But that's one of the reasons why here in Fairfield County, some of the measures have had to be um perhaps stronger than what some folks in other parts of even our state or the country have seen. And it's why we're going to have to be really serious about getting these tools in place so we can move forward.
Another question we got here, and I know we've somewhat answered, but we give a um high-level elevator reason. Any reason why we have such a huge delay in unemployment checks? Uh, maybe Laura, you want to start off with uh that one?
Yeah, I think the big thing is just the overwhelming crush that the Department of Labor received. They received two years' worth of claims in one month time period. With archaic systems, a lot of manual processes, uh, they were flat-out overwhelmed. Um, beyond that, you know, so they have made some headway. Uh, they've reported about eighty percent of claims processed. Um, the communication systems also need to have some improvement, and there has been some user error input along the way, too. Uh, they are working hard. They're trying. And again, if there are specific issues that anybody on this call has, please reach out to any of us, and we will follow up for you.
And here's an excellent question here. "Any update on letting caregivers and parents with ADD or autism being allowed to accompany these individuals to the hospital? They cannot fend for themselves." Um, does anyone know if there's been any action on that or?
Oh, actually, Christine Stewart from News Junkie asked the governor about that yesterday at the presser, and he said that he would look into it and get back to folks and kind of had a positive indication in his response. So I'm I'm hopeful that there will be some movement on that. And that's, I think that's one of the most evil things about this virus, is that it's left people to be alone. And it's what is so hard, especially for the folks in the ADD community, but also for our seniors. It's really, really terrible. So hopefully, the governor will be able to address that.
And I want to address the fact that our nursing home, the governor, through his latest executive order, did address uh uh an alarming percentage of of um infections and and deaths in our nursing homes. I I think that is a critical area in a crisis mode that we need to address. I think the other critical part is really to acknowledge everybody stepping up and working on this together. Uh, we we really do need to work together to facilitate what needs to be done. So, um, Brian, I appreciate you putting this together, and um thanks for the opportunity to be here. to be able to share some of these thoughts and ideas.
No, excellent. And I think we've got, why don't we, we'll wrap up in like two minutes, just because I want to try to see if we can get a few more of these done before we finish up. But where do we go to apply for contractor self-employment benefits? I believe that's the DOL site, but anyone want to confirm that?
It should be the DOL site. At this point, that system is not up and ready for applications, but first, make sure you have applied for regular unemployment. Again, I'll say this makes no sense to me, but it is what people are instructed to do. Apply for regular benefits, you'll be denied, that's part of the process, and when they have this ready to go, there'll be some instruction on how to apply.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so I do know, I do apologize, I know we do have a couple more questions, but I know we had a couple hard stops at one, so I want to be respectful of that, and I want to thank our entire Fairfield State delegation. You know, we really are a bipartisan group. We're going to do what's in the best interest of Fairfield in the state of Connecticut, and I want to thank you all for joining so much. So, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, it was wonderful to see everyone. Thank you so much for having us.
Thanks, everybody. Stay safe, stay home.
Thanks.